Okay, we'll call the City Council Workshop for May the 15th, 2021 to order at the Richardson Sixth Grade Academy. Ms. Ashby Kudrow.
Mr. Sampson.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Jefferson.
Here.
Mayor Witt.
Here.
Mr. Coberline.
Here.
Mr. Helfenberger.
Here.
Chief Fillmore.
Here.
Okay, first item is discussion of council, as I understand, Mr. Sampson wants to do a presentation at this time.
That's correct, and if you don't mind, I'll do it from the podium. Sure. I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week, I was tied up on city business at the Institute for Elective Municipal Officers with the League of, Florida League of Cities, which was very high opening. But I've been working on a plan for Lake City for civilian oversight of police, and I've come up with a plan after looking over 200 different plans that I think for our community could work. I'm using this workshop to address the public, but also to address my fellow city council members. In Florida, that's the only way we can address each other is at a public meeting, and I just want to provide this plan so that you guys would have an idea of what I want to propose. You go to the next slide. First, how can civilian oversight of law enforcement help you? First, it protects civil rights, it ensures greater accountability, it helps to manage risk, supports effective policing, it'll build bridges, and it'll increase confidence in the police. My plan consists of actually not one entity, but two, to solve this issue. An independent police advisory panel and a police complaint committee. Next slide, please. The purpose of the independent police advisory panel is to ensure accountability and transparency to the community, as well as expanding public confidence and trust in the administration and operation of the city police department. The panel would advise and make recommendations to the city council on major policy and administrative aspects of policing within the city and other global policy matters such as, but not limited to, the following, and I've got them listed here: community-oriented policing, that's to foster understanding and communication between citizens and police, strengthen and ensure throughout the community equal protection under the law, increase involvement by citizens and police in community programs and events, homeless and mental issues, noise issues, operating budget and resource allocation, assisting in crime prevention and generate community interest and involvement in crime prevention, day-to-day operations, which includes policies, procedures, and personnel and discipline. Also, any other recommendations that could originate from the panel. Next slide, please. The second entity that I'm proposing is a police complaint committee. I put the Florida statute up there. The police complaint committee would at all times comply with Florida statutes and Florida law, which limits civilian investigation into law enforcement. It also limits the ability of a review board, as it would be called, and how it interacts with both the police department and with the public. So what this committee would be, and the purpose would be, is to assist the chief of police with the policies, practices, and procedures concerning complaints and the processing of complaints against police officers. So main function here will be in fostering transparency and encouraging the community to have a more robust communication and involvement with the police department. This committee will require close communication with both the chief of police and the Internal Affairs Department within the police department. Next slide, please. Now, the functions here include, but aren't limited to, they'd be receiving reports from the chief of police or her designee regarding complaints made to the police department and the manner in which they're addressed. They would receive reports from the chief or designee regarding completed investigations of complaints against officers and statistics of cases involving internal discipline and their resolution. It would advise the chief on matters arising from the reports, which the committee believes requires attention. And in addition, submit at least an annual report and any other reports as necessary to the independent police advisory panel for inclusion in its reports to the council. The independent police advisory panel and the police complaint committee would be provided support by the city employees, specifically the city manager. We would ask the city attorney or an independent attorney as needed, the chief of police, the city clerk would function as the secretary and attend the meetings as well. Next slide, please. What's the goal? The goal was transparency and accountability. We need to be proactive, and we need to make sure that we're covering the needs of the community. Frederick Douglass said, "Find out just what any people will quietly submit to, and you have the exact measure of the injustice and wrong which will be imposed on them." Every day, we ask citizens to submit to the government through the enforcement arm, the police. It's necessary and important that we have a strong police force that operates through transparency and with accountability to the citizens they serve and protect. That's democracy 101. Likewise, every day, we ask police officers to put their life on the line to protect the citizens of our city, and we must give them the tools and resources to be successful in their protection of the citizenry. The more trust and community spirit we can build, the better off we will all be. And the reason, as you can see, I'm proposing two panels, is one's completely independent of the police, reports to the council, the second one for the more review function would be a function of reporting and working with the police. And then I'm ready for any kind of questions you would have, and then when we get to public comment, anyone in the audience could ask questions as well. Okay, she's asking who would appoint the committees? So my recommendation would be that we would take applications, and upon receiving the applications, the city council would elect a chairperson for the committee first, and that would be required in my plan by at least four-person vote. So not a 3-2 vote, it'd be at least a 4-1 vote to become a chairman of that committee. And then upon that, anybody else would be elected by majority. I'm recommending seven each. And there's a reason that I came up with the number seven. So involvement's crucial, more opportunity to involve's crucial. If you go with five and two don't show up, there's only three people. If you go with seven and two don't show up, you still have five. So I think, but if you get much bigger and you go to nine, then you start getting to where it inhibits cooperation and also timeliness of action. Okay, hold on. What we'll do is, I'll finish here, then I'll have, when y'all come up to do, you can ask questions. Because I have, I do have something for that, but the problem is that people online can't hear the questions. I'm sorry. But I'm definitely open to any questions you guys have. There is a solution for that. Sorry about that.
That's okay, I just, they can't hear.
Yeah, we gotta make sure people hear. I guess you want me to come back so we can have questions?
Yeah. If people want to ask a few questions, that might be a good time to do it, if they come to the podium, and that way we can have, where people can hear. Yeah, come on.
Good morning. My name is Shawnee Justin, and my question is today, there is no, let's review this every year, and let's see both sides. Like this part, don't like that part. You're starting something new, you don't know if it's going to work or not, there's no annual review to renegotiate or rediscuss pros and cons of this program. That's number one, I'd like to see added to it. Number two, I wasn't too sure of number eight, of such oversight on the daily operations and the daily things. When you run a company, just like the police department, you need a certain amount of freedom. Now, at the end of time, if these results become an issue, yes, that needs to be reviewed, but you can't have that much oversight to a company except at the higher-ups, but not day-to-day to have to go to the board. Well, today I did this, and today I did that. Can't do that. It's inefficient, and you tie the chief's hands. That's all I, two things I have to say.
Okay. Okay, so there would be an annual part. We would actually require at minimum an annual report from the panel.
It's a report, that's not a evaluation and revote to see, okay, we're going to continue this program or we're not. I want the council to be able to say, hey, we need to change this. Reports not quite strong enough with all the things you're putting in place with the police. It seems uneven in the balance of power to me. It doesn't seem to be an equal voice, I guess that's what I really want.
So it could be revisited at any time, just like any of our advisory committees. So if you look at the city code and the ordinances, it would be a committee just like those committees. So if you look at the utility committee, airport committee, so when we set it up, it will have the same type of committee structure. Look at the CRA committee, it would be in line with that, and be in that same place in the code.
Okay, I did not see it in your presentation today, but I want the ability to revisit this if it's not working, or there's things that seem that can't be resolved.
So every committee's revisited? Every two years, I believe. And as a matter of fact, so what I proposed today was the fleshing out. I have more information, so I would like to see a limitation on the time period that you're on the committee. I would like to see a short term, say two years, with a max of three consecutive terms. There's a whole lot of other parts to the process, of course, but I think the main thing is providing more oversight, not less. And as far as the daily operations and your question on that.
That seems kind of strict.
No, I think it's important. I think when you're a civilian and daily you're affected by the operations, I think you can revisit them at any time. I think any operation in any standard operating procedure manual can be revisited. In my time in large companies all the way to small ones, there's some times you don't find out a change needs to be made, and still something happens. Is that pretty much your?
Well, it seems like with everything else that you have observing and reporting on the day-to-day, if you start tying the hands so much, they can't be out there doing what they need to do. But I do believe in accountability, but don't tie the hands if they can't do their job.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be tying hands to do the job as much as a review of policy and procedure. I'm not saying we're going to ride along, and this is what we're doing this day. It's policy and procedure that needs to be looked at continually on an ongoing basis, and not just in this department, but every department. To me, I look at the police department as being one of the most important departments in the city. So it's most important for several reasons. As a citizen, we spend more tax dollars and money out of our pocket on this department than any other, and it's also the one with the most, I would say, risk as far as following the rules, not following the rules, and has the most ability for a negative or positive turnout in someone's life. So we have to make sure that the citizens governed by that have input, and that's all we're really looking at.
I'm glad you brought up that there are the most expensive ones we have, but remember, these men go out and put their lives on the line for you and me. If they go down, it doesn't just affect that one man, it affects their whole family and the community. So I'm not sure we're not spending enough for them.
That's right.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the people that have signed up to speak. Mr. Warren.
And council, Chairman Witt, is this the opportunity where I can address the presentation by Mr. Sampson and then lead into what I originally signed up to say? Is that appropriate? So, Mr. Sampson, I think the two-pronged approach with the plan, I like it. I think that anybody who disagrees with oversight, it gives the impression that there's something that, no, I can't imagine nobody wanting to not have oversight, even in my own companies. Each day, my nurses are asking for more boards, and more oversight helps move the needle forward. It helps with transparency, it helps with accountability. We find out issues that we don't know about until it's way too late, things that could be prevented, things that could be resolved much early on, and you have less frustration, and you have, I would only believe you would have less complaints. I also believe you have more trust, and you have more crime being solved. I said this to the police chief many, many times, and I've said this to law enforcement. If you establish a citizen review board, you regain the trust of a community in which is heavily harassed, heavily targeted, which is predominantly the black community, and they claim that there's a high level of crime that takes place in that community. Do I disagree? I think the Brooken Report says that whites and blacks use cell drills all at the same rate, but the arrests and the incarceration don't bear that out to be the case. I also make the argument that if you take, my girlfriend, for instance, you take her mom's subdivision, which is Cypress Landon, we consider that to be the more predominantly white community, that's where the most murders have taken place in Lake City. That's where the most burglaries have taken place in Lake City, and you take Wentzong, I know that's your district, not to put a negative eye on your district, but that's where a lot of the shootings and killings have taken place, far, far away from the black community. But in saying that, I think that the oversight aspect is extremely important, because that way you can help people feel comfortable about calling law enforcement. If you don't trust someone, you're not going to reach out to them. My biggest concern is rebuilding that trust between the community and law enforcement, and I think the oversight begins. I'm not saying it's a one-size-fits-all, or it's the one-two to fix everything, but I believe it's the right step in the right direction. So I appreciate you taking our time to research the 200 committees that you mentioned, because there's 200 in the U.S., and taking out the time to present this proposal. And I think oversight and the day-to-day operation does not end. I was looking at your report or your presentation, and the first thing you said is not to restrict the officers having the tools they need to do their job. So I didn't see anything in your short presentation that said that you wanted to restrict law enforcement from doing their job. You just want to make sure that policy and procedure was in place, so it's effective for everybody.
Could I comment real quick on that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So that's a good point, and also sometimes the resources where they're allocated. So there's, from time to time, we talked about the expense of the budget I mentioned a moment ago, where perhaps there's something the community sees, because they see with different eyes than the officer sees, and that's where that had come from.
Right. The only slight objection, and maybe it a flesh out between the rest of the council, because I know this is just your presentation, and I would think that y'all would have some discussion as to how the picking of the individuals get on that particular board, whether it be an application process, or whether or not it be different council members appointing from their district or whatever that case be. But I leave that up to the full council to make that decision. I think you guys would do what's in the best interest of both law enforcement and the community. I think, I don't want this to ever get lost. This ideal is not anti-law. This ideal is for a productive way to get law enforcement and the community to coexist in a way that's 100% positive to the best of our ability. I think everybody, when they pick up the phone, they dial 911, they want law enforcement to come. But they want law enforcement to come in such a way that the outcome is positive. And that's all we're trying, at least that's my whole purpose of trying to accomplish a positive outcome for law enforcement in the community. I have too many friends and too many family that are law enforcement, for it to be anything anti-law enforcement. Mr. Mayor, if you would, I want to go into the ideal of me writing my opportunity to speak to the council.
Okay.
And I'm gonna wrap up.
Okay.
Again, for me, it's about trust, it's about accountability, and it is also about trust. Remember how we got here. Remember how we got here. Remember it was not law enforcement, and when I say this, I'm not saying it in a negative way. Remember it was not law enforcement that brought this to the council. Remember it was not the chief that brought this to the council. Remember that it was not the city manager who brought this idea to the council. It was the citizens, however, that originally about, almost a year and a half ago, tried to individually work with the police chief to accomplish this and got rejected. It was the citizens who originally tried to work with the city manager to accomplish this, and it got rejected. And so we were left with no option but to bring it before the council, and the council voted 4-1. Remember, it's the citizens that came to you all about the citizen review board. And so the citizens should have a strong plate and a strong opportunity to be heard and be on the board to get what they want to accomplish as far as citizens and police officers working together with the citizen review board. I just want to stress that to the utmost, because I don't want that to get lost in the details, how important it is for the citizens to have their voice heard. I think officers have their voice heard all day through police reports, they have their voices heard all day through breaks with the chief, they have their voices heard all day long with filing either complaints or either filing charges against individuals, but the citizens have never had a voice in law enforcement. And law enforcement affects the community greatly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So this is Francine Smith.
Hello, can Sylvester speak for me?
I just want to, I don't, if that's, if that's, if that's.
Do what now? I guess so. My name is Francine Smith.
Mayor, this is, council, this is Francine Smith. She's had a encounter with law enforcement in which she was arrested for aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, and in the report, it read that the officers arrived on the scene, made contact with the subject identified as Francine Smith. Ms. Smith advised she wanted the male subject removed from her residence. It goes on to say she did not want him there. While on the scene, Ms. Smith, according to the officer, appeared to be intoxicated and belligerent toward, what was this, Michael. She also, according to the officer, admitted to wanting to kill Michael in front of the officers. The officer go on to say, "When I was able to separate parties, Ms. Smith became in this way every time," according to Michael. This is the person that supposedly she was assaulted, attempting to assault. Then produced videos which showed Ms. Smith holding a machete in her right hand, threatening to chop off his leg. In the video, which shows Ms. Smith holding a object and Mr. Michael backing away from Ms. Smith, however, she kept moving forward. With this machete in hand, the video was recorded from a cellphone, according to the officer, and it was uploaded to Officer Hardison's LCPD number 401 body cam. They arrested her on these charges. This is the report. State attorney comes back and says, "After numerous attempts to obtain the cellphone video in reference to the report, the state would not proceed with charges due to the lack of cooperation evidence that was never provided to the state." Her frustration has been as many other people, that law enforcement has, seems to have a bad habit, not her saying it, but even the state said on numerous occasions, they asked the police department for this evidence that would cooperate her being arrested. So we're arresting people and saying in our reports, this is a transparency issue, this is an accountability issue, this is a trust issue. Why was this young lady arrested and was told that it had video, but when the state attorney asked for it on numerous occasions, this is the head state agency of prosecuting people? Why would our police department not provide if they had evidence to the state regarding this? And why was she arrested if it proves that they did not have sufficient evidence? This is the issue that erodes the trust when the officer has the ability to make a report that's not accurate, to make an arrest on someone, but then when it's time to produce the evidence, it's not there. But the damage is already done to this young lady. So how do we fix this? She's got a DCF case because of it. She had to go to jail because of it, she had to spend money because of it, she's lost the ability to be able to be with her kids because of it, and this is all because of an officer wrote something in a report and locked her up about somebody who was never supposed to be to her house, and a video, according to the state attorney, don't exist. If we do not get a citizen oversight board in place for the community, this law enforcement department is going to end up having us in a huge liability situation. And who's going to end up footing that bill? The same person who we're arresting, because we're the taxpayers, end up contributing to the police department budget, the same budget that asked them to protect and serve us, not to lock us up wrongly.
Thank you.
And we're just, we're done, man? This is, this is, no, this is a workshop. She's, this is a workshop, man, you.
It's fine.
It's not fine, man.
Just because I have a record in my past that it's okay to come to my house and arrest me, because I've done something in my past, I changed my life, but that's not cool what y'all did to me. Y'all took me away from my kids, took me out of my home, I had to stand chill away from my kids. You don't want to be away from your children, but I had to do that because of an officer lied on me, has came to my house numerous of times, lied on me, and took me to jail. I have been to jail. These officers have took me to jail for talking, speaking my mind and saying what I want to say at my house. Now, I couldn't, that's no, I didn't commit a crime, just because I talked belligerent, she took me to jail. You say what you want to say at your house, I can say what I want to say at my house. You pay your bills, I pay mine. I have been to jail for saying what I want to say at my house, not doing nothing, and that's not fair. It's like y'all don't care. I had a brother that was murdered. I can't even just go to the police department and ask, what's going on with my brother's case? They think it's, like, it's a joke. It's not a joke, I lost a sibling. It's not a joke, y'all don't care.
Man, I just don't think that was fair, Mr. Mayor, that I think she wanted to speak and you were willing to cut it off, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Derek Sneed.
Hello, council. My name's Derek Sneed. I'm going to let you know a few things very similar to what we just heard about, some of the things that the Lake City Police Department's done specifically to me, and most of it's been by the same officer. First thing's an incident in 2016 where an officer came to a traffic stop, and basically in the end, I was the one that was arrested and taken to jail for obstruction. Lo and behold, after I got out and I had to deal with the state attorney and the charges, I asked for the video, because I was personally videotaping the officer at the time, and clearly I thought she was in the wrong. Did I get the video? No. We had to make a secondary request to get the video as part of discovery, and then I was only given the car video, not the video from the officer. But because I had my own video, which completely refuted the officer in question, charges were dropped. But like this individual, I had to go to jail, I had to pay the bond, I had to do the time, and I have it on my record. You don't get rid of that, that's public. It's not gone, there is no take backs on that. But at least the charges were dropped because of state attorney. They didn't have a case at that point when they saw my video. The second incident I'm going to bring up, literally just happened the 17th of this year, I'm sorry, the March 17th of this year. Specifically, I was engaged with an officer, and I asked, "Is your body camera on?" Because I will not talk to an officer if their camera's not on, or if I don't personally have a camera or somebody there to videotape it, because plain and simple, these experiences that I'm telling you about are all with the same officer. The officers lie. If there's no camera, there is nothing to back up somebody refuting an officer. "Is your body camera on?" Yes, it is. Well, I actually know that we were in an area at the sheriff's department, at the jail, they also have cameras. Well, when I requested the body camera footage from that officer, I was told in the police report that she had it on, but when I requested it, it's not there. I was told there is no body camera footage. Unbelievable, it's in the report, but it's not available to me. And this is my second time with the same officer. I then, because there is no body camera footage, but I know what happened, requested it from the sheriff's department to say, all right, we were at the sheriff's department, she doesn't have her camera on, or there's no video from this, they don't have it either. It's unbelievable to me, but the bottom line in the police report, the officer lied to me and in the police report, bottom line for that one. Next, same officer on the 15th of April. Door ding in a parking lot at Publix, okay? I get out of my passenger car door the 15th, it just so happened that this particular day was the windiest. It just so happened that this particular day was the windiest there had been most of the month, and the windiest most of the day during that time period from, I believe, 12 to 3 o'clock. So this was about 1:40, 12:45 when I opened my car door and I was holding my dog, like you would a kid. I door dinged the car. Legitimately, I door dinged it, okay? I looked around, nobody was out there. I went into the restaurant to place my order and because I knew that there was a UPS store there, I intended, while I was waiting for my order, to go ahead and type up a little note, have it printed, and it would be there when I got out. Before I could even get that far, the employee of Gator's Dockside came over and started harassing me. First thing I remember, I'm going to call the police. I'm like, go ahead, you know, I door dinged your car. Yes, I did it. It's windy out, sorry about that. It further escalated from there to having the police called over a door ding. And it just so happened that the same officer that I've been experienced with is the one that eventually came out. I'll ask for body camera footage of that incident. It's not there. You know what she actually did? She actually filed obstruction charges against me and criminal mischief against me for a door ding. And what that did was a series of events that actually just, I believe that resolved this week without the police department's help. What it did was became criminal, so I couldn't get the police report. I could not get the other party's name who was involved, whose car that I hit. So when I had to make a self-crash report to DMV, it was limited to my information. Couldn't get the other party's name from the police department. Criminal nature, they sent it to the state attorney. This officer wanted to file two criminal charges against me for a door ding, and it is no more than that. State attorney had it for almost two weeks. I couldn't get anything from them because they then needed to determine whether or not they were going to file charges against me. So I still couldn't get the information. The only thing that I had left to tell that business to preserve evidence, because I knew the officer wasn't going to do anything like that, I had to file a lawsuit. And then I had to create my own subpoena to tell that business to save the video and to preserve that evidence because I wasn't getting it from anybody. And I surely knew the police department wasn't going to have it, the state attorney wasn't going to get it, and lo and behold, they didn't. At least the state attorney dropped those charges. But because they dropped the charges, I still can't get a copy of that report. I still today do not know whose car door I dinged that put two criminal charges, at least that weren't filed by the state attorney, against me. I have to call and speak to somebody named Dana in the state attorney's office in Liveo. That's the third incident. You know, when it comes to, I believe I heard, trust and accountability, there is no trust there. Accountability, there is no accountability for the videos that I requested, and I'm not the only person. I'm just one person with my incidents. There are obviously many other people that have had worse incidents, maybe more incidents, but where does it stop? It's not going anywhere. When it comes to, oh, let's see, I've never had one of these before, speaking in public. This is beyond belief for me and I get frustrated because this is personal, this happened to me. I'm not talking about a third party here. But one thing that, in all of this, I'm just going to end with this, this is probably the highlight here. One thing that I've heard about all of this recently is, as far as a citizens' review board, it came from the citizens. I would almost say it came from one person, or majority from one person, but it came from the citizens. Where was anybody else in the last 11 years here to do this? Where was anybody else in the preceding 25 years in Tallahassee? They didn't have one until last year, I believe. So in 36 years, with somebody being on the police force, police chief now, no citizens' review board. It had to be brought to you sternly. And then, no offense, but you're the one, Mr. Mayor, that voted against it and you literally just cut somebody off in speaking about this review board. That's unbelievable that you vote against it, you're cutting somebody off. One quick last thing that, I also want to bring this up that was brought up last week, and then I'm going to tell you the name of the officer that did this to me three times. I call her Officer Bump, and the reason for that is this, that in the newspaper, 2017, this officer set her foot, got ran over. The vehicle was almost two to three feet away from her. She didn't get run over. She called it, or the Lake City Police Department, I should say, called it an adrenaline bump. That officer I call Bump, Ariel Peterson. She's a traffic cop. She's been creating lots of accidents. And my personal request that I received back in 2018, because I haven't updated it with these new ones to request it as far as what just happened to me, but in 2018, she's had multiple accidents. She's lied multiple times and she's still an employee, I do not get that. And you can add my three issues that she's lied to get, whether it's not having her camera on, not telling the truth, it's beyond belief. Anybody that has received a traffic ticket from Ariel Peterson should contest it because her words should not hold up. It's called breeding, I believe, is what the law is, that you should be putting an officer that's lying on the stand. So I just want to end it with that. I fully like the idea of the two committee or the two-part approach that you have because I read some of the other places that have their committees and it's usually just one approach that they have, but the two-part, even better than anything that I've seen. And I just want to say that I'm enthusiastic about having this going forward and I'm very happy with some of the things that I've read on the internet, seeing lately, and people that I've talked to have brought me here because for me to stand here and talk in front of a group of people, I hate this. This is not my thing, thank you.
Conrad Wallace.
My name is Conrad Wallace. First of all, I worked with the Florida Department of Corrections 20-plus years, left as a captain. I rode up today and the first thing I see is the like police cars, like it was Richardson last week. Last week it seemed like you had half the force out there, today you only got two or three. What's the difference in the place? Is it more dangerous over there than it is here? Trouble happened then. First of all, I want to say is that neighborhood down in Richardson called Bedrock. I was told as an officer, John, patrolman John, who worked with the police department, was riding through the neighborhood, asking the kids, where are all the N words at? Why would he ask kids where all the N words at when adults live in the neighborhood also? I have another thing I'm going to talk about. There's rumors and accusations that Ms. Gilmore told one of her staff, it's okay for them to use the N word as long as they do what she say. If that's true, that's like, a black woman is the strongest being in the world, if you ask me. And if she went that low to do that, that is uncalled for, that is nasty, she shouldn't be here. A lot of other stuff is going on through the neighborhood, it's happening with the police department. And I believe Joe Heffenberg, the city manager, and he's not doing anything about it, that's letting it have a way. If that's the case, I'm just a regular citizen. I make a recommendation that both of you terminate. They are not doing anything for us but hurting us and drawing division. We are a community, just like everyone else. We love to have fun, we love to go out, but all of the dirt is not happening in the Black community. Okay? Go out to Harvey Lobby on Friday and Saturday nights, where all the big loud trucks used to be. They moved next door and now the big lots. Last week I seen the police is sitting over there, sitting down, talking with them. Go out on Highway 90 Friday and Saturday nights and hear those loud trucks running up and down 90. No one is out there, stop. No one is in one section of town where you have the chief, seven, eight police cars, the sister chief, seven, eight police cars, and all the Black neighborhood. That shouldn't be. We need a board with the citizens set up so we can look at some of this stuff, man. Because they are harassing these children. You got grown men right here, what's not being harassed? Sooner or later, what they are doing is fixing to start something. People getting sick and tired of being sick and tired of all of this stuff that's going on right here in Lake City. They're getting behind you and trying to interrogate, trying to make you go off. They're following you all over town, okay? And doing nothing. What they are going to do is start a war right here in Lake City. It's not a threat, I'm just saying what's happening. Because what they are doing there is they're going to follow the wrong people one day and they're going to go to the wrong places. This has to stop. I wish you guys would go ahead and just get this committed together so we can move forward and stop some of this foolishness because it's not, it's going to get real ugly. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa George.
I want to say, it is, first thing I need to address, it's unbelievable, as the man said, how you, Mayor, as the head of the city, your attitude towards citizens, speaking their truth. No one at the police department acts the way they do, you the head and you act this way. You can't wait five minutes and let someone speak their truth? That's so disrespectful. I am so disappointed. I am, I am so angry right now. This is not a black and white issue, this is a police issue. It's funny that this young, not really funny, but this young man came in and said the same exact thing that Mr. Warren said last Saturday, the adrenaline bump. Same officer, here on my, here we go again. We hear this officer name too much. We support good cops, but bad cops got to go. But it seems like you support negative behavior. You don't even want to hear the citizens. You have citizens from all over, all walks of life, telling you similar stories and you don't think that we need to have some oversight separate from the police department? That is crazy. Anybody in their right mind will be like, hey, we may have an issue. And it's going to be an issue, not a black and white issue, it's going to be the people against law enforcement. When you see the people, what's going on in this country now, you see a mixed race of people. You don't just see blacks, you see blacks and whites hand in hand going against police officers. Because wrong is wrong. We do not want to be the next epic center of disaster. But I do want to leave and say this, when people come up here, especially people who don't speak, have some respect. Even if you don't want to hear it, play it off, have some respect. Because when you appear and it's your turn, you're going to want somebody to listen to you.
Jayne Glendale, about...
Hello, Mayor, City Council, Glendale, about, my address is on the phone. I think what we're hearing today, the same thing we heard last week, is testimonies about why there should be a police review board, a citizen review board. Much of the comments are about what behavior police officers. But all of it geared towards why we need a citizen review board. Now, I'm sorry I missed Mr. Sampson's presentation, I would assume, and it's acceptable because I hate to sound like I'm, I am, if Sylvester say okay with it, does that mean I'm pretty much okay with it also? So I'm sure it must be a positive thing that you presented, I'm sorry that I missed it. Hopefully I get a chance to read over it. But on last week, Mr. Mayor, you heard testimony from people about why we need a citizen review board. I can't think of one reason, if someone maybe could do it today or at the next meeting, why we should not have a citizen review board. I mean, what's the downside of that? Citizen review board make recommendations to the, to the, to the police. Citizen review board is not a board that necessarily just react to, react to issues in the community. On incidents, they can make recommendations, they can feel what's going on in the community. There's an issue in our community, believe it or not. Where there's smoke, that's an old saying, but there's a fire. It's just a matter of time, if you're going to need a fire truck out because people are going to get in the know. And because folk don't come and complain, that don't mean they don't have a complaint. Some people just don't have the nerve, they're not articulate enough. They don't like the limelight, they don't want to be in the newspeak, they worried about repercussions, so they stay home. That don't mean there's not complaints, there are many of complaints in this community. I don't want to be repetitious from last week, but I want to say this. On Easter, was one of our worst days in North Lake City, nobody dispute that. It was a bad day for the community, it was a bad day for law enforcement. But on Mother's Day, last week, did not, what happened on Easter did not, the testimony what took place on Mother's Day. On Mother's Day, I went out to the cemetery, spent some time, riding around, then I started getting these phone calls. Mr. Val, is Almas Park closed? I said, closed, no, I don't know anything about it being closed. So I ride back. On Mother's Day is not a hangout day, for those of you who know what hangout means in the community. People hang out on Easter, that's been a historical thing in the Black community. On Mother's Day, they go meet, they visit their mom, their grandma, they go to the cemetery, they don't hang out at the park. Generally, they don't hang out at the park. We ride by the park on Mother's Day and there's eight police cars out there, four or five on the west side, 10 or 12 cars between the west side and the east side. It felt like we've been occupied by an army. And people felt that way. Now, they wasn't going to the park anyway, but it created a division, it created a negative attitude towards the police. Now, if there was some intel, I'm not in the police intelligence, if there's some intel, there ain't going to be a fat or rat, that might have been understandable. But those of you living in North Lake City, we know that people don't hang out to that park on Mother's Day. It was almost like they were trying to send a message that, hey, if we in town, don't come out here. I'm just, actually, how many people you think were going to go out to the park and use the park on Mother's Day with their grandkids and they see five, six police car parked? If we had respect for the police department, it wouldn't be an issue. They'd just ride up, hey, how you doing, officer John, how you doing, officer, blah, blah, blah. What do they do? They see all the company, man. There must be a problem. And if the perception is that the eight police cars parked at the park and all the people in the park are the police department, why would the citizen assume that there's a problem? They should assume that everything is alright, it's a good time to go out there. But what they decide, nope, it's a bad time to go. That's just one example where a police, a citizen review board could come and handle. But I think citizens would get together and say, wait a minute, that was a bad look. You don't have to camp out in North Lake City to prevent an issue. And that goes to the lack of respect and the lack of trust. As a relation to this citizen review board, I think that, I know you got a budget problem, but it may be necessary or initially that you set aside a little bit of money to kind of staff a citizen review board so that you can have proper minutes, have proper instructions, keep notes and all that kind of stuff. Just have some citizens meet without some record on it, get lost in the transaction. But I think you've heard enough this week, I think you heard enough last week, to understand that there's an issue in this community and a citizen review board may not solve the issue. But it will go a long way, Counselor, to rebuilding the trust that's been lost in this community. And it's been lost over a period of time, to be honest with you. I think I mentioned it last week, that in the 1980s, we had a survey of the police department within the city of Lake City and it came back some of the same issues, there was no trust. Fast forward almost 20-plus years later, you got some of that same issue. Yes, we call 911, but that's not the issue. It's not when you call the police that's the problem. It's when you get stopped and mistreated that's the issue. I'm going to end on this note, as a citizen. I'm driving down, this hypothetical, I'm driving down Wilson Street, I get the corner, Wilson and Mary. Police officers be parked there often. I look over, I see the police, two cars parked there, I turn left, towards Monmouth to came going off. I turn right on MLK, just so happened the police officer pulled out, he's behind me. I turn right on Monmouth to came. I said, oh, cop behind me. I said, "Oh, cop behind me, no big deal." I get to Patterson Street. I turn right on Patterson Street, police turn right on Patterson Street. Now, a cop could be going by his business. But you know what my attitude as a black man? My attitude as a black man, this police is following me. If I miss round, turn left on Watson Street, and he turned again, I'm getting nervous. I don't know if I need to put my phone out. So I call him, my daughter, you know. But that's the problem. When a person, seventy-one-year-old man, as myself, I keep reminding people that before, I don't look that old, but I am that old. But anyway, a seventy-year-old black man, getting nervous when a police officer's behind him, that is a problem. When I hadn't done anything wrong. Now, if I had my glasses missing, I left my tag was out, or whatever, I could see that. But I didn't violate no law. Now, the cop didn't stop me, but in that whole period of time, I'm paranoid. And that's where the problem lies at. Pulled me over, I reached to get my phone, police think that's a gun. You know, long story made short, it'll be a serious mistake not to establish a citizen review board. I think it's the answer, well, not the answer, but it's definitely a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. De'Leen Lee?
I'm De'Leen Lee, my address is on file. I'm a member of the Citizens Police Alumni Association. I'm a mother, grandmother, and soon to be a great-grandmother. I wanna thank Mr. Mayor, Chief, and the council members for listening to me. I've got a speech prepared, but I first wanna address those that have expressed their personal grievances. I feel for them. However, I guess maybe I was misunderstanding. I thought this was a forum where we would express our desire to have an advisory committee or not. So with that being said, I'm gonna continue with my prepared speech. Communication is a vital tool in any, I say, I dare, any and all relationships. The chief advisory committee should be an advisory capacity only. It should bring committee feedback concerning public safety issues and how law enforcement needs and actions need to be addressed. It should facilitate the flow of ideas relative to police service for continued improvement and growth of the community. Our community must grow and be educated. Communication is a two-way street. This community needs to be well-informed and educated with the many operations of the LCPD and its varied activities, and be able to communicate that to the citizens of Lake City communities. Understanding and communication between the citizens of Lake City and LCPD can be greatly enhanced by this committee when the committee becomes the eyes, ears, and mouth to both the citizens and the chiefs and the LCPD. This will give a better perspective to all. Maybe they should call the, this committee, the prospective committee rather than the other suggested titles. While acquainting the chiefs with the community and the community with the chiefs, a stronger light of communication can ensure and foster understanding and more knowledge of issues at hand. This will be an avenue for open dialogue, which is of informed and informative content. Listen to that again. This will be an avenue for an open dialogue, which is of informed and informative content. In closing, may I say I look forward to this committee encouraging, by its service, the partnering together of the chiefs and the LCPD with citizens, ensuring the safety of all residents and of those visiting our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Herrera?
Good morning. Does it sound okay? My name is Lee Herrera. I am a relatively new citizen member of this community in Lake City, Florida. When I first got here, the neighbor down the street from where the house I was staying invited me to go to breakfast with the chief. She went on to tell me what a beautiful woman she was, that I would love her dearly, and I needed to go. I did go to the meeting, I was warmly welcomed by the entire group, applauded, and I felt very warmly received by the remaining people that I was meeting. In that meeting, I learned that any statistics on whatever crime has been going on and solutions were being reported to the city. I also learned that the people in attendance could write their complaints, or they could speak their complaints. I was much impressed by the fact that people were able to have this communication and this ability to very positively interact with the police force. I was very quickly recruited by Sue to attend the Lake City Citizens Police Academy. It doesn't cost anything other than the time that you're going to invest in attending. You learn the ins and outs of the police, how they work, how a grievance committee goes, how they're hired, what is it that they do in certain things. I mean, I learned everything about the police department, and I was very grateful for it. I was also recruited to be part of the alumni, just like the before me. What we do is we try to fundraise for needs that the police may have on money that the city council may not be able to grant. And so we try to park cars during the fair, they will give us a certain amount of money so that we can help out these officers. I've also learned that there is breakfast, I'm sorry, coffee with the cops. You go there, they're very informal, you visit with them, you talk to them, you have any complaints, you can talk about them. And then, let's see, around Christmas time, I also volunteered to give food and so forth so that those parents whose children were going out to have Christmas shopping with a cop, I forgot the exact name of it, so that they could be there. So what I have learned around here is that you have an awful lot of opportunities for the community to interact. They can join the group, they can come over and take those classes, they get advertised in the papers. So there is an ability for the local people to have a very positive influence, communication, relationship with the police officers. I hope the council will have the wisdom to see these things that are available, and I'm sorry I'm overstepping here, these things that are available to to the community to interact, and the difference in the airing of things that occurred at situations where not all the facts can be made available. Because if you did that in every single incident, these meetings would go on forever. So I hope you guys have the wisdom to see that you do have tools available for a positive relationship, communication, the building of trust, that it already exists here. I hope I made my point. Thank you.
Okay. Linda Poplin?
My name is Linda Poplin. I live in the county, but my husband and I have two businesses in the city. The police advisory committee could be an additional way, to what she has already mentioned, for citizens to help the police. I think the chief should be on the committee to hear the suggestions made by committee members. The committee should definitely not tell the police what to do. In other words, the committee should be an advisory committee, not an overseeing committee. My reasoning for this is that none of us really knows anybody else's job unless we've done it or been trained to do it. Probably none of you know what my job entailed as a public school music teacher. I'm also a church organist. If I told you I had to register a piece, you may not understand what that means. There are other examples, and they're minor compared to what could happen in our community if those not trained as police try to tell them what to do. It seems that a small group of our citizens, including some who have not followed our laws, want to do away with the police or tell them how to run the department. If citizens of our city are following the law, they should welcome police presence, not be intimidated by them. Parents should be teaching their children that police officers are helpful to our community and not a threat to them. I appreciate being able to make an appointment with Chief Gilmore. And that doesn't make me special. Any citizen can make an appointment with her. I respect and trust our officers, and I thank them for the difficult jobs they do.
Thank you. Susan Tool?
I believe I am in a unique position. I would like the council's indulgence to read some information. It should take approximately five minutes. Good morning, Mayor and Councilman. I am Susan Tool, both a citizen of City Ward 12 and the administrative assistant to Chief Gilmore and Assistant Chief Butler. Before being employed with the Lake City Department, I worked almost forty years for Ed Wheeler Insurance. That is forty years of interacting with the Lake City Police Department, albeit in a different capacity. While employed with Mr. Wheeler, I attended the Citizens Police Academy, which opened my eyes to a lot of information that is not known to the general population. There was information I did not know, I did not even know I did not know. I would like to speak to the possible formation of a citizens advisory board. While I understand some of the reasons as few citizens are speaking out for its implementation, I do not understand why these same people, and even this council, seem not to understand the strict standards already in place under which the Lake City Police Department operates. The reason for seeking and obtaining accreditation is to continue the best practices by which a law enforcement agency is run, whether it is a city police department, a county sheriff's office, Department of Agriculture, Florida Highway Patrol, or even the Florida Wildlife Commission. These agencies are held strictly accountable through their in-place policies and procedures, which include basic tenants shared throughout the state of Florida for the safety of all citizens. I am proud that both the Lake City Police Department and the Columbia County Sheriff's Office are accredited, as less than forty percent of agencies in Florida carry that distinction. At last week's workshop, I was subjected to so many half-truths, misconceptions, preconceptions, and just plain lies. I wondered why the council allowed this diatribe to continue for over an hour. I thought the only reason city council requested these workshops was to allow citizens to share whether they feel a citizens review board, or more correctly, a citizens advisory board is needed or wanted in this community. Too many people are willing to point a finger and criticize our department, our chief, and our officers. But do these people attend any functions sponsored by Chief Gilmore? The words accountability, transparency, and trust were repeated over and over as a mantra for the small group who feels they are not getting enough attention from the chief when they want it. But may I point out, some of our outreach programs, including Breakfast with the Chief, Coffee with a Cop, Mentoring in Blue with My Black Elementary School, Chop with the Cop, National Night Out, and the Citizens Police Academy, which has already been mentioned. So many more community events to which we invite all citizens. It's intended to share transparency and foster trust. However, I do not recall seeing these complainers there. We invite you to get involved. When Chief Gilmore took over as police chief in September of 2009, one of her goals was to create an advisory board. After the success of the first breakfast with the chief that began in November 2010, just over a year after she was sworn in as chief. She was advised by many attending the breakfast that they appreciated being ordinary citizens who could come to enjoy a breakfast and ask the chief their questions, face to face, or voice their concerns. They saw no reason to have a separate group meeting for the sake of meeting. If I remember information shared at last week's workshop, Glenell Bowden pointed out that back in the 1980s, when he was a councilman, there was discussion for citizens board. I wonder why it never came to fruition? Why was its formation not pursued at that time? There is concern about law enforcement just in certain areas of the city. Well, officers go where the crime is, so I invite you to draw your own logical conclusion. If you are feeling harassed, is it because you have something to hide? Most law-abiding citizens appreciate an officer's presence. Generalizations are being thrown out, but no one seems able or willing to give specific instances where they believe an officer either did not do his job or did not do it well enough. Of course, there are many more instances when the officer did his job, did it well, and followed every procedure correctly. But one gets upset because they were caught. Please note, I use the word believe, it is only one person's opinion. Did you call the chief to make an appointment to see her or talk on the phone? Which, to set the record straight, Mr. Wallace, is my job. So I do make phone calls at the chief's request and on her behalf. Everyone, everyone is treated with respect by me, and all phone calls are given to the chief for handling, or, after her review, may be passed on to someone who can better assist with the question or issue. No one should ever live under the assumption that what they do and how they do it cannot be improved. But improvement should come from people who respect you and genuinely want to help by sharing ideas. Some of these ideas will work, some won't. But before I share my ideas with you, I should have some idea of what you do, or at least ask questions. I can ask Ms. Sykes for a public record request and walk out of her office knowing about that particular process. But by no stretch of the imagination would I presume to now know everything the clerk's office does. Want to know what all she does? You might start by asking her politely. If you have been an attorney, you know what attorneys do. If you have been a doctor, you know what doctors do. If you have not been a police officer, how can you presume to know what they do? You may have had an interaction with law enforcement, but trust me, you do not know their job. Let's bond together to fight problems in our community. Drugs that are so prevalent on our streets and in the hands of our children. Drug addiction does not care what color you are. Gang wars that involve innocent people when the shooting starts. It doesn't matter what color you are. Children struggling in school or at home with lessons. It doesn't matter your color. Children trying to survive with absentee parents. Doesn't matter your color. Older children with little or no adult interaction and supervision. Not color-driven at all. Crime scenes where no one sees or hears anything, thus refusing to assist apprehending a criminal. It doesn't matter the color. Then there are problems in our community and in the world that have nothing to do with law enforcement. Cancer. It doesn't care about your color. Inaccessibility to good healthcare due to cost. Doesn't matter your skin color. Economic problems, again, color does not matter. The COVID-19 virus. It didn't care what color you was, and still doesn't. Gosh, if we could put just as much energy into trying to address these problems to find positive outcomes as some people put negative energy into dividing our community, there's no end to what we could do. To treat others with respect is the only way to get respect. You do not work toward improving our community by disrespectful tirades, spouting your own agenda, pontificating, calling people liars, nor driving a wedge between us. If a citizens advisory board is created, I would like to see it as a venue through which, with mutual respect, this community is brought together. I appreciate our officers and deputies. I respect our officers and deputies. Are they all perfect? No. And neither am I, and neither are you. We all make mistakes, but to move forward, we must find mutual respect and caring for all people within this community in which we live. Rather than pointing a finger, why not hold out a hand? Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Next is Mr. Tim Meis.
Name's Tim Meis, living on Jaguar Street. I was president of the Citizens Police Academy for five years. Took it over from Larry, who's passed away last week. And it was, I wasn't sure about when I got it, but it was a very interesting, life-changing event for me. for me, because I got to meet more people in this town than I ever thought I could meet. Because I was in the community, I didn't care what community it was, what side of town it was on, promoting the police department for people to come, join the CPA, take the twelve-week class, it doesn't cost you anything, to learn what the police department does. Former city manager, I tried to get him to get the city people, the council, you guys all to try the class. If you can't spare two hours a week for twelve weeks to learn something about your own city, shame on you. Period. We've had a few people, previously when I was president, that did come to the class. My favorite one was Ron Williams. Love the guy to death. Had a good time with him, got to meet everybody in his church. I've met a lot of the church people in the area. I noticed last meeting, they showed the map of all the crimes, which is focused on east of Marion Street, not realizing... We also police seventy thousand people up by the interstate that come through this town every day, maybe more. The city has to somehow help these neighborhoods do better, find funds to hire more police officers, get trained to take care of things in this city. I hear threats occasionally of what could happen in this town if we don't do something with this. Let me tell you, I was raised during the riots in 1963 in Cleveland, Ohio. I went back there last year. The area from Murray Hill, which is Little Italy, six miles straight east of there, was burned down during the riots, and this is 2021, or 2020 when I was there. It's still a mess. They've never repaired anything there. The streets tore up, everything. Is that what you want on the east side of Lake City? Burned it down? This is ridiculous, what's going on. There's nothing wrong with a committee that's attached to the police department with civilians to advise. But where does it end? Do we get another oversight committee for the city council? For the courts? For City Hall? We need to work together, come together, and do it in a smart way, not in the emotional way. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl, council.
I have an email from Carol Thompson, who is currently at a funeral. She asked me to read this. Let me tell you a little bit about Carol. She is the daughter of Winnie and the late Izzy Thompson.
Is it Carol or Carl?
Carol.
Okay.
She is the ba... Carol was blessed with three children, Ina and Nicole, Mikel, Paul, and Hannah Janay. Carol was educated Columbia County Public Schools. Prior to graduating high school, she received her bachelor's degree from Jacksonville, Theological Seminary, and Bible Studies. And this is what she had me say. "I am extremely concerned about the way I've seen the division between our community and law enforcement. Personally, I feel that the times we are living in at this very moment is the worst I've ever seen. I am very concerned that instead of building a relationship between the two, there is more turmoil on both sides, law enforcement and the community. Besides the issue that has already been stated prior to today, I would like to express the feelings that I've had as a citizen and a mother on a very special day to many of us, Mother's Day. This is a very special day to all of us, as long as I have been living here forty-two years. I have never known that day to be a hangout day. On this day, after spending time with my mother and children, I went to check on one of my writers that lost her son to gun violence, that was having a very hard day. When riding my seven-year-old daughter says, 'Mommy, what's going on? Did someone die? Why are there so many police? This really bothered me.' There was no reason for all of that. On Mother's Day, I desperately feel that the energy that law enforcement is putting towards causing division can be used towards other things. The mindset is off. Our community is small, and the amount of unsolved murders, for one, is insane. I fear there needs to be a middle meeting mark between the two. More community meetings and activities that involve both parties to build relationships. At this point, leadership has been destroyed... Excuse me. At this point, leadership has destroyed any type of relationship with the black community. We must rebuild it at this point. I am open to any suggestions from law enforcement to unite the community. I am in no means condoning any wrongdoings. We need the law, but we need equality, not division. I am here for the birth of a better Lake City, Florida, Columbia County. I am in total agreement with transparency from our law enforcement agency, Carol Thompson." And let me just add this. It's different, and you're gonna get treated different. Look at me. Black girl, wild red hair. I'm definitely being seen different than this nice, sweet lady right here. But I'm highly educated. I have a master's degree. I attend the Florida State, but you don't see that. The police don't see that when they see me. We do need a advisory board separate from the chief. Our experience is gonna be totally different. That's my best friend right there. She don't look nothing like me. She look like someone nice and sweet, and I look like the wild girl. Our experiences may be different with law enforcement, just because how I look. That's my best friend of over twenty years. So yes, perception is everything. You have to... People say you can go... We went to Breakfast with the Chief. I've been to Breakfast with the Chief. I've been to the Policeman's Ball. I've been to all these things. We've experienced... We've experienced all this. Breakfast with the Chief. We just had breakfast told about our concerns. Nothing happened. We need a separate Citizens Review Board. Thank you.
All right. Let's do everything that I've received. Council, do you have any comments? Okay. I don't have any more to say. Okay. Thank you.
My name's Brandon Colbert. I live, again, I do live in the county, but I've recently opened a business here in Lake City. But I'm a former police officer. I think it's very important that everybody hear every bit and every side of everything. And while the council has already voted that the Review Board is going to happen, I think that this workshop, it's very important for people to understand why it's happening. I think there's been some untruths spoken on every side, out of emotional thoughts and whatever. However, that's not why I'm here today. What I'm here today to speak about are the truths. As a police officer, I served this community for four years. Never had a discipline issue within four years. I have complaints, of course. You do your job and may get complaints. Some of them, I can say that I caused myself. It's a learning curve in law enforcement. Let me say, I wasn't going to speak about this till City Council, but I see a lot more citizens here, and these are people that need to hear this. In law enforcement, mistakes are made. But when those mistakes are made because the entirety of the department is sick, then we have a problem. And a lot of you aren't going to like hearing this, but many of you in the CPA have rode with me when I was an officer. Many of you requested to come ride with me several times. I took my job with great vigor and honor and integrity. I took pride in what I did. And still today, I can say that the hardest year that I've ever had started on May 28th last year, and is still going on to this. I'm a combat veteran. I was hurt, injured, came back, and decided that I couldn't sit and just take the normal job. So I got back into the saddle, and I became a law enforcement officer. Paid for the academy out of my own pocket to do so. Why? Because I wanted to. Because I enjoy serving the community. Because I want to be here. On May 28th, I had an incident in which there was a large crowd at Cedar Park, and my sergeant sent me there. In a crowd of people with no backup. And when I asked for backup, sergeant never sent anybody. Never got addressed in my whole discipline process. It never got addressed. It got mentioned that maybe he should have had more backup, but it never got addressed with a leader. From May 28th until October 11th, I sat at my house on administrative leave. I call it house arrest. Monday through Friday, I was told by a lieutenant that I had to be at the house. I couldn't leave my house unless I had permission from a lieutenant. Over the months of sitting at home, not knowing what was going on or how it was happening, I made several calls, and I was told, "Let the process happen. Sit back, be quiet, and stop calling. We'll call you when we're ready to have you come in." From May 28th until October 11th, the citizens of Lake City Police, the citizens of Lake City paid me to sit at home, watch cartoons, and eat cereal, because that's all I could do. My home life became a wreck. My mental faculties began to drope. And when I called to inform my leadership of this, I again was told and met with resistance that I needed to be quiet, sit back, and just let the process play out. Over the months of the investigation, which did not take long, matter of fact, the investigation was completed on July 23rd. May, June, July, three months. Investigation was completed. Matter of fact, in June, the Internal Affairs Investigator had compiled all the information that he needed. The two ladies that were involved in the incident refused to come speak on their behalf in the incident. The state attorney, I spoke with them, Chase Larson, sent a letter that stated that while probable cause existed, they were not going to go further with the case, which only made my seat look even worse. But why? Why weren't they going to proceed? It was because the video, my body cam video, was never sent to them. So they had no evidence to corroborate that what happened, what I said in my report, is actually what happened. And let me first state, I'm a constitutionalist. I'm not going to put someone in handcuffs, take their freedom, and put them in jail unless they've committed a crime, unless I know it's the right thing to do. Matter of fact, these two women that I dealt with that night was not my first encounter with them. My very first encounter with them was involved with a weapon, with them two chasing each other around a car, bashing a car in, in the middle of this area, come to find out they don't even live there. They don't live there. But the citizens that do live there have to deal with it. They have to deal with those problems. So that night, I affected arrest, and they fought me, broke my finger. Matter of fact, it's still permanently disfigured, and if I want to fix it, I have to have surgery. Not going to do that. And many of you may think that I'm up here going on, thinking that I am a disgruntled employee. Let me tell you that I have been doing nothing but searching for jobs, trying to find a job, and move on. And every time, I hit the same roadblock. I get through the background investigation, I pass the polygraph exam, I get everywhere, and then I'm told, "Well, we can't hire you because we've been informed that you were terminated from your job." And I was baffled, because on January 22nd, I had a resignation letter in with the city. I didn't get fired. Matter of fact, the discipline, which was a complete overreach of responsibility by the administration... Let me explain something to you. There were three other incidences, use-of-force incidents, which should have been terminated, individuals. One got forty hours, the other got a twelve-hour suspension for pepper spraying, two black men, handcuffs for no other reason than arguing with them. I had an actual combatant fighting me, who broke my finger.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Oh. I believe the speaker needs to address the council, and I think we're a little bit off topic. If we could refocus the attention back to the council.
Mr. Green, I'm going to disagree with you, because I want the citizens to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Does the speaker need to speak to the council, or is he speaking to the audience?
No, I'll speak to you. I'll speak to you.
Thank you.
The fact is this. A Citizens Review Board is necessary to stop the overreach and abuse that happens inside the agency. You want better police, you start with the police department. Why is it that in the four years that I served at the Lake City Police Department, the city lost thirteen officers? From the time I started to the time I resigned, you lost thirteen officers, all of which who sat down with the city manager, gave him a list of their grievances, gave them a list of why the issues were the issues, and they got ignored. That's why a Citizens Review Board is necessary. Because who am I to go to when I've exhausted all of my avenues, when I know I'm not wrong, when a use-of-force expert is backing me up, stating that by the policies of the Lake City Police Department, I should not even be in this investigation, but they completed it, found it sustained, when nobody else's side, other than their own perception of the video? Did you know that? Did you know that I was given, or attempted to be given, two hundred and fifty-two hours, the worst suspension ever given in Lake City Police Department's history, less than next determination, let me mind you, for a use-of-force investigation, where the two witnesses didn't even testify? Now, unless I'm just a liar, and I lied in my report, then I was justified. My sergeant justified my use-of-force report. But yet, it got overturned, and for almost nearly six months, I was maltreated as an employee. I have never been ashamed of my service in the United States military until this incident. I fret telling any agency that I'm a veteran. I will not use my veterans' points. I will not use veterans' preference now, because all it has done is caused me grief, turned around, and stabbed me in the back. A union rep, who had no business putting out there, told the agency that I was a combat veteran, so they decided we're going to send him to a psychological fit-for-duty exam. Where are any of the fairnesses here? Where was the council? Who was notated about this? Who was told about this? The city manager was. He overturned the discipline to forty hours. But that didn't help me any, when they turned around and continued on with a fit-for-duty exam, which, mind you, by the EEOC, has been verified as illegal. Have I sued you all? No. Have I threatened to sue you all? No. Because I actually care about the community that I live in. And when I hit your pockets, it's hitting their pockets, not yours. I won't ruin my community. These are just some of the gross neglects that have happened to employees with no oversight. The cherry-picking on who and what you're going to do is ridiculous. But where were you? Where were each and every one of you to protect me? Matter of fact, this is what you signed. This is a union contract that you, the members of the City Council, came into agreement with every union member of the police department. Throw it in the trash. It means nothing. Because when that was violated in my proceedings, I was told, "We were busy, it doesn't matter." We just gloss over a contract. I'd like to see you gloss over the contract with a blanch, maybe give the police a raise. Won't do that, will we? But it's okay for a director to tell me, while I'm sitting in front of them with my union rep, that they violated union contract, and the city manager okays it. Yes, he overturned the discipline, but guess what? That contract states that if discipline is not given within the thirty days, it's done. There's no discipline to be had. I still got disciplined. I still lost forty hours of pay for justified use of force. And then just this week, the chief puts out, and her command staff notes, "Meeting with Cedar Park, wanting to know what we can do." What a first thing you can do is don't turn an officer into a spectacle when they do their job. When they go and effect an arrest because they're fearful that if they do not, a shooting will occur. Because he goes to that neighborhood, he gets out, he spends time with people in that neighborhood. You know why it didn't go viral, Lake City? It's because everybody there knew I did my job. Yeah, the two women were upset, they were mad. Who wouldn't be when they get arrested? You want to know why an oversight board's necessary? It's because all these things have come back to this. People saying I got terminated, causing me not to be employed at other agencies, wanting to move on and cannot get a job. Let me explain something. There's libel, and there's slander, and both have been committed in this instance. It's unfair. It's ridiculous. All I ever did was my best. But I'm only one of many officers who sit at this agency and need your help for the oversight, because guess what? It is. It's dependent on the mood in the agency. It's dependent on what's going on. There's no consistency. Ask every one of the people that met with the city manager. What was their first complaint, Mr. City Manager? What was their first complaint, Mr. City Manager? Consistency. Did you all know that he met with every employee of the city at Lake City Police Department when they left? Sergeant Tammy Cox, Ivan Musetti, Brittany Carlson, Cody Woods, Brian Brunger, Kristen Lang, Lucas Shiseki, Ryan Collins, Archie Cruz, Lieutenant Van... These are just some of the names of people who have left because of the morale in the Lake City is not a stepping stone. Let me make that clear. This isn't a feeder agency. People don't come here to go somewhere else. They come here to make a career. And if they can't, why even have the agency? Turn it over to the sheriff, save yourself a couple million dollars. How many thousands and thousands of dollars in 13 members did you waste for them to come here temporarily, leave? Just burn the money. Burn the money, let the sheriff come take over and be done with it, right? Citizens Police Academy, that's why you need an oversight board. Because what was done to me was unfair. And I wasn't going to speak about this because I didn't want to sound like a squeaky wheel or someone who's just upset. But I am upset. I am upset that I can't get a job anywhere because every time I'm being said that I got terminated. And I found out who it came from. It came from the new, new HR rep. She wasn't even here when I was here. What business does she have to say that? And if, if an officer gets treated this way, what happens to the community? Let me explain something. The men and women of the Lake City Police Department, every officer that I knew and worked with, every one of them had a heart to be in this job and do this job. But until you all get a rain on all of these issues and let this oversight board actually do what they're supposed to do and start pulling out the inconsistencies, it's not going to be a professional agency. It's not going to be a place people want to work. And it's going to open you up for liability. All I can say is, I hope I can find a job soon. And I hope all the disparaging things that have gotten said about me and the lies and manipulation over what actually occurred on May 27th gets cleared up. But maybe now the citizens have a clear picture that it's not just from one side that a review board's necessary. It's there to protect the officers too. It's there to help you all realize, because I bet not one member on city council knew about any of this, did you? Probably not, because everything stops with the city manager. Where's the accountability there? Men and women cannot serve the public if they're in fear that when they serve the public, they're going to be disciplined for doing such. Policing is not pretty. Policing is not always friendly, but it's a necessity. The community understands that, they know that, and they're willing to accept it when it's fair. And that's the problem, is I can name instance after instance after instance where depending on what that citizen has said or what they've done or depends on the amount of policing they get. So hopefully now you'll address these issues. I shouldn't have to sit at my home and wonder about my livelihood for doing my job. I shouldn't have been put through what I went through. My relationship was ruined because she worked from home and I was always stuck at home. When I told them that, they didn't care. They wouldn't give me administrative position in the office doing something. Hell, I don't care. Let me take paper staples out of paper, I don't care. Let me do something. I hope at some point it, it appears to you that this is disparaging, but it doesn't just happen to me. It doesn't. It's happened to many, many, many employees.
Thank you very much.
So I guess I'm done. Is that how you treat veterans, sir? Is that how you treat citizens?
He's been for 20 minutes. Does the council want to hear more? I mean, I've let people speak as long as, I mean, way past any, I don't think I've stopped I think I've let everybody speak as much as I could in the last two weeks and I do, I get criticized by the county commission because I let people speak. Anybody want to speak?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Senator, you know, I made, uh, comment I made last week. If you recall, I said that in the eighties, we commissioned a survey group. We did not discuss review board. In fact, in the eighties, I don't think people even talked about review board. But the eighties and 2021 is a whole different story. We didn't have the George Ford, we didn't have the Dante, you know what I mean? There's different issues now. So, so that's one. Another thing I want you to pay attention to, and you're looking at, what do you see today? So on this side, good patriotic, right system, getting up talking, oh, no problem, the police department is good. On this side, people color, we got issues. I hope you recognize that divide, that's in the comments. I'm not saying they lying, they're not telling the truth, I believe they're telling the truth. But their perception of law enforcement is a whole lot different than those of us who live north of the railroad track. They don't see the same thing, they don't hear the same thing, they don't deal with the same thing. You know, and having been on that board is one thing, but living north of the railroad track is a whole different story. And I hope you recognize that, you know, when, when, when Nessa came and said, I'm glad you sat over here, so why is it coming? We divided. You walk in, all the black people sitting over here, all the white people sitting over here, you know? And the views are totally different. But just keep that in mind as you think about a citizen review board.
Good afternoon, morning, afternoon. Again, Chevelli Young, I spoke last Saturday. And again, I had no plans of standing before you this morning to say words, but here I am. After listening to all of the words that were spoken, some very degrading, if I should say, no one should be called a liar, no one should, it should never be said that people are afraid because of their criminal background. I have no criminal background. I, and I do fear. I fear, and I shared it last week, I'm traumatized. And it's, it's just, don't try to speak for other people. When I stand here, I speak for myself. And I'm standing here today to reiterate that we do need a review board. And I thought, I guess I missed the boat. I thought that we were here today to talk about the review board and not that whether we're going to have a review board. I think many people are confused on that. But we do need a review board. But you know, today seems like salt. Salt is used for seasoning. But today it seems like salt was used to kill beautiful green grass which has been sprouted up. This is a good cause and this is a great beginning, a review board, for the future. We can forget everything that has happened in the past if we can find a starting point to begin bringing the community, as I believe Mr. Warren said, and the police department together. Everybody's never going to love each other. Everybody is never going to get along, but there should be some meeting ground. And I believe the review board can bring together a meeting ground. Those who are under, who are chosen or however you design the board, those who are chosen, if, if, if you get in there and it's not what you expected, you feel like you can't produce, you, you can't bring positivity, then bye-bye. It's as simple as that. But there's, we, we got to start somewhere. We're back here today farther back than where we were last Saturday. It's embarrassing. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of everything we have. Can we start today before we leave here? Let all of us come to some clarity, some understanding of what we're going to have next time we meet and not come here with the talk. I hope everyone can leave here today, especially myself, with some clarity and some understanding. Was I the only one who thought we were coming today to get some instructions? And we're not there yet. We're just spinning wheels. I am a person, I've been torn down. And let, let me say this. I was not invited here to share my story. I've carried this story on my shoulders for almost five years and I know good kind well, I don't know who believes in God in this house, but I know good kind well, he didn't pressure me with this story to stand here today and share it and nothing happens. I know it's for a reason that I stand here today and share this story. Mr. Warren didn't invite me to share my story because he didn't know it. Is one person in this room who knows the story, who knows my encounter that happened on July 9th, 2016, and that's my very best friend, who has walked me through this thing and I thank God for her. And I didn't come here to preach, but I believe that my story is going to make a difference. I didn't carry it for five years. To stand here and nothing happened, can we please make a difference in this community? Can we please make a difference in the future that our children and our grandchildren don't have to sit in a setting such as this? We have already dropped the ball. It's time to pick it up and get to moving. An advisor, review board can't hurt nobody. All it can do is help. Now we leave here with this question. Are we going to help? Are we going to help? I had one in the front seat, one, two, three in the backseat, one was an eight-month-old. He's five years old now. I would like to believe that those guns drawn on us, on him, on all of us, that something positive would come out of it. You don't know how many times it has run through my mind, make it public, post it on Facebook, go talk to this person, go talk to that person. My spirit said, no. I'll let you know when. This is the time. And I leave here today praying that it's pressed upon your spirit to do something. All of us grown, think about the children.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. I just got a couple of things. As you know, I've been following this story for some time, still local Columbia County Observer. Last time this meeting was held, it took two days to get this posted to the internet. I'm not sure why. Well, I know why it took two days because last time it was, a decision was made not to record this meeting directly through the Zoom cloud. I don't know who made that decision. Apparently the city manager didn't know who made that decision. Mr. Dial at that time, I don't think know who made that decision. Clearly, there's only one person that could have made the decision at the time the meeting was being recorded, and that was the new IT director who had the ability to push a button on his console and record the meeting in the Zoom cloud as it happened. I brought that up, I wrote about it. Here we are today again, not being recorded to the Zoom cloud, which has a lot of positive things for it. Beginning of the meeting, the city manager said he didn't know why. The IT director said, I should ask somebody because he's not talking about it. I think that's a pretty good summarization and that's fine, he doesn't have to. Mr. Dial and I had a conversation, I'm not exactly clear what that was about right now, I would have to think about that. And the city manager told me that he was going to look into it. Seems to be something, the city manager is always looking into something. But the community can't get involved. The people are waiting to look at this thing and by two days later, it's like putting your dinner on the table and coming to eat it two days later. Anybody that kids, that has kids, no, you leave your sandwich on the table for two days, it kind of loses its taste. So I would ask that, being that this is now not being recorded directly to the Zoom cloud and automatically getting posted to the internet, which on a day like today, this meeting would go up there right away. Within 10, 15 minutes, it would automatically be posted instead of waiting two days. City manager sent out a memo to everybody that this is now suddenly mysteriously appearing on the city's agenda on Monday night. The Zoom business and what you're going to do in the future with the internet. Media didn't get that email. I don't believe the clerk got the email. Just five people in the city council got it. I don't know why the city manager wouldn't send it to the media. Certainly it's got his name on it. And that's just an aberration. I know you're not like that, Mayor. You believe in the freedom of information and Jake and all you guys. I know all you guys for a long time now. Just wrong. Mr. Green knows it's wrong. He's going to send it, send it to everybody, send it to media. The idea is to let the sun shine in, not the sun shine out. I really was going to talk about, the reason I'm here is I got over the wire service a couple of days ago, an opinion from the Fourth DCA in Florida, that's the District Court of Appeals. Got a lot of problem with the city attorney sitting here getting $160 an hour at a workshop where there's no legal decisions that have to be made. You know, years ago, I spoke to Terry Huddleston when he was the superintendent of schools. Anybody that thinks Lake City is not a racist community needs to think again. At that time, at the Richardson School, middle school, neither 64 or 67% of the children here couldn't read at the third grade level. Anybody in the education system might remember that. During that same time, Columbia County High School, Columbia County High School was, had a derating, I think before years in a row. State rules are that, I believe after two years, the state has to do something, but the state never did anything. And why is that? I asked Terry Huddleston, what are you going to do? He says you got 64 or 67% of the children coming from Richardson's medicine school can't read at the third grade level. What's going to happen to those kids? He says, what do you want me to do? What can I do? He says, I can't leave them in the school. You know, if this was Boynton Beach where the decision of the Fourth DCA came, which I'm going to get to now, and this was 60-plus percent of the well-heeled white kids in that school couldn't read, you better believe somebody would have done something. And anybody that thinks they wouldn't got rocks in their head. Everybody knows that. They didn't desegregate Columbia County till 1971. And if it wasn't for the feds breathing down Columbia County's neck, these schools would still be segregated. And I think there's a lot of people that believe that. So the Fourth DCA said this, let's get past Lake City to the, to the present time right now. The Fourth DCA came down with an opinion, a very important opinion. This woman's son snuck into a movie theater. Could happen, young teenage kid sneaks into a movie theater. Could happen here in Lake City. A kid could sneak into a, into a building. And the reason I'm... I'm bringing this up is because all we've heard during these two meetings is problems with recording. Every time you hear somebody's got a problem with their police videos or some other videos. So this mother recorded this on her cell phone on a public piece of property. I can give you the number of this thread or email. Well, you don't take emails, but I can send it to the clerk and she can get you the case number. Recorded this on public property. And after an extended period of time, in a three-to-two split decision, the court said this, that the police, at the time they were doing their job, had an expectation of privacy, even though they were on a public piece of property, and she couldn't record the meeting. Now, if that was the case in Illinois, that videotape, that phone tape with George Floyd would have not been evidence. Would have not been evidence in the cases in New York, throughout this whole country. So the way it works with what court case takes precedent, this is a court of appeals case. Mr. Cobenline can explain that to you guys, maybe at a meeting. I'm not going to do that now. But there's one court case that explains exactly how precedent is taken in Florida through the courts of appeals and the local circuit courts and what have you. But I think that the city council needs to know what's going on, because you need to decide now if, when, anybody, anybody who's watching the police do their job on a public piece of property, if they pick up their cell phone and turn on their phone, number one, is that going to be evidence? Number two, is that person subject to arrest? And number three, what's going to happen in Lake City if that, if that, and Columbia County, actually, if that is the process now in this community? So I respectfully ask you and the city attorney to look into that Fourth DCA case. I can send it to you all if you like. I was going to write a story on it, but it's kind of complicated, and you got to really see where the judges came from. Some of them may be Scott, and you know the way court cases go now. It depends on who appoints the judge. But it was a three-to-two decision. The dissenting opinion is certainly worth reading. And I would respectfully ask you guys to consider ramifications of that, should that become operative in the city of Lake City, because that's going to affect everybody and everything as far as civilian and police relations moving forward. Thank you very much. That's all I got.
We, Council of Sampson presented his presentation. I want to know, where are y'all going to go with that? Are y'all going to look at his presentation, discuss his presentation, maybe looking into adapting his presentation? Where do we go? Because we've already did all the discussion, like Ms. Young was saying. Where are we going now? What are we going to do now that we have it? So are we going to, are y'all going to discuss it at the meeting, vote on it? What's going on next? Just so we'll know.
Mr. Mayor, I know my expectation is that now that we've had input from the community on two separate occasions, I expect that the city council will probably take up the issues of a city council meeting where we can take action one way or another. And so that's, that would be my expectation, is that it would come forth at a future city council, whether or not it's Councilman Sampson's exact proposal, or the council not going to take any action at a workshop, obviously. But I think we're done with the workshops, unless my fellow councilmen, you know, see the need for more workshops. I think we've held two. And so I think that the next step is a city council meeting for where we could take action.
So you wouldn't do a workshop, you'd look at his proposal instead of doing a workshop to see if his proposal is exactly what you want to use? Or you're just going to go to the council?
So for me personally, I think he's presented his proposal, and I've read that, and I've looked at it, and I listened to Mr. Sampson. So I'm going to consider that. But I think the next step is for the city council to have a forum where we can take action of what the council's going to do going forward. Now, it could be, you know, maybe my other council members have a different plan, and maybe we want to have a workshop specifically for Mr. Sampson's proposal. But I know for me, I feel satisfied that the public's had an opportunity to present their concerns. And I know I wanted to hear that, and I think the council voted to hear that. So I think we've done that. And so I think the next step is a city council meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's just me personally. I don't want to speak. There's everybody else, so they can.
I think the discussion today and other discussion between citizens that I've been hearing, it leads us down the path where the two committees are necessary. I think it's crucial that we have an independent panel that reports to this council. I think that takes out some of the issues which we heard with both employee relations and citizen relations, and it depoliticizes the event. It makes it where the community at large has input. Now, to address some of the things we heard from some of the other individuals, it is an advisory panel. So ultimately, it is not the final say. The guys sitting up here are the final say. But it's a tool that we can use to get us where we need to go. And then as far as the second part with the complaint committee, I think that's crucial to get the review. One, we've heard from people like Ms. Young, and her story is powerful. I think I've watched it four times, even though it wasn't at the meeting last week. There's people like her that don't speak, that I hear from, that said, I'm not going to come, because they are worried about how it will be perceived and taken. They don't want to be called names in the community. They don't want to be called out as being liars and people that associate with lawbreakers, when in fact, they were not. So I think there's a real concern, and I think what we need to do is de-stigmatize that process and make it where it is not political and it's not governed by the people who are overseeing it. So democracy is crucial. You know, I know we pay for a membership to the, and we get the magazine for the police chief, which is the IAACP, I believe. And one of the slides I had taken out, because I wanted to shorten my slide presentation, had an article from them quoted from October 2015, that talked about democracy being the core value, and citizens have a fundamental right to participate. And that's crucial to remember. Not I volunteer to go to an event put on by the police. That's not a right to participate. That's I'm showing up to a rah-rah session. And that's fine. We need rah-rah sessions. It's good. But citizen advisory boards are becoming important components of most law enforcement organizations. And when handled appropriately, according to this article, it says it results in more democratic and effective organizations. And police leaders should encourage and engage citizenry. And that's where I come from with my plan. I would like to see it proposed at a meeting where we could vote on it. I think if we decide to move forward with it, it would be in ordinance, which would require a meeting where it was approved, and then a second reading. I believe that's the case. Is that the case?
Yes, sir.
I'm not a legal professional. So the proposal, I think, would work the best for the city. I also have about 15 copies of what I said. So anybody who missed, I know there were some people may have missed, could pick that up and take a look at it. And the slides, I think, will be available on this video on YouTube. But there's definitely a need for independence and oversight. And so that's why my first site said civilian oversight, because ultimately, when you look at it, and you look at the organizational chart of the city, it doesn't stop with these guys sitting here. It's the citizens. The citizens are on the top. Everybody else is employees. So the citizens need input, and that's crucial. And then how we make that happen, I think is crucial, because we could set this up. And if we don't get input from the community, and people turn up to apply to be on these committees, it'll be a failure. So that's the other piece. And if you read and you look at them, there's some, there's some that are time limited. Pensacola had one. It was specific to address an item, and then within a six-month period, they did a single report, and they're done. But I think the ongoing process, what my hope and goal would be, is that this is something we start, we proceed down the path, and then it's not needed in the future because it's taken care of. That's what I'd like to see. Now, will it be that way? Who knows? And that's all I have on there.
I might understand that the proposal that you've made, this dual proposal with an advisory and an oversight, is going to be carried as one single entity. You either take them both, or you take neither. Is that what you're saying?
Well, a couple of things. One, I'm just one of five people here, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I would think they're both crucial. I think they provide two totally different purposes. In the way the Florida statutes are written, if you go with a straight review board only, it kind of limits some of what you can do because of the reporting process. And really, in Florida, review of complaints is always reactive. So I look at it as two parts. So you've got the proactive part, which is policy and moving forward advisory. And then you've got the reactive part. Let's see what happened, and then we can address what happened. But any review board in Florida, that's all it is. It's reactive. And reactive's okay. But let's go on the front end and try to say, this is what we can do to improve and move forward. And so I think it's, it's two sides of the same coin. But to do it properly, in my opinion, and again, it's just my opinion at this point. And I was hoping I'd hear some feedback from some of the other members up here.
Again, you're saying you either get both of them, or neither of them?
In my opinion, I think that's the way I would do it.
Mr. Mayor, so to answer Ms. Limley's question also, is Mr. Sampson has put forward his proposal, but there's no action that can be taken at the workshop. So what will happen is, I suspect, and Mr. Sampson, I'll probably agree on this, is the council will have discussion when we can take action at a council meeting, and we will have votes, and we will determine the way forward at the meeting. So I think, I know for me personally, I wanted to receive more information from the community. We've received information from Chief Gilmore, which I think was very helpful. And so now we've had two meetings where the, as Mr. Sampson says, in a democracy, where our citizens in the city of Lake City have had an opportunity to speak to us. So I think now, when we move forward on this issue, I think the council members will then be able to express their views in a way that we can hold a vote for how we would want to move forward.
I guess to clear up matters, is there an expected timeframe in which the two-pronged oversight committee would be on the agenda for council to address it?
I think we've been moving on this. We've had these two meetings. I think this will be something that's a move forward. I can't tell you exactly what meeting it'll be at, and what form it'll be, because personally, I'm doing my personal research on it, and I've done it, and I'm going to continue to do it, especially after this meeting, look at Mr. Sampson's proposal. And then at some point, we got to have something that's actually in writing and sets forth what we're agreeing on. I mean, we can agree in theory, but that's not anything that we can use. I mean, we got to put it black and white that, hey, this is what the committee is, this is the formation of it, and all that. So it's going to take a little bit, but I wouldn't think it's going to be something that's going to get kicked out of the regular, in my opinion.
I was asking for an expected timetable on when the, I mean, I'm not rushing you. I just kind of get an ideal in my mind of one month, two months, 60 days, 90 days. I was just trying to wrap my mind around the timeframe of we've had the workshop.
I would say the next meeting or two, there'll be anything in black and white that would be proposed that I know of, unless somebody's got one. Like I say, I want to be doing research and all, and I think everybody needs to have their own ideas, and we need to put them together to where there's something, that the consensus would be real.
So, Mr. Mayor, I know, I don't have a specific timeframe to address Mr. Warren's question. I don't have a specific timeframe in mind. But what I do think is that the five of us recognizing importance from the two meetings. And so what I suspect is that the city manager knows that this is an issue that's important. And so in a timely manner, they have to have time to do the work, but in a timely manner, it'll come back in a city council meeting in some form or fashion. If not, it is on the five of us to hold the administration accountable for that, and it is on the citizens to hold us accountable.
Mr. Mayor, I think about the timeframe, just one more mention of that. I don't know that it will take a super long time. Now, when you get into the legal part of it, I know that can sometimes take a while. But I think, I would think it'd be reasonable that we would act pretty quickly, depending on what our management does within the city. And again, like Mr. Green said, we have to hold that part accountable. And I think we will. And then we look forward to the public holding us accountable.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. And it's been very formidable. We've had two sessions, and appreciate everybody coming.